I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to the community, this is the time for citizens who would like to address the city RPG Commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. Carl Hartman, take it away, sir.
Well, I want to thank you all for contributing your time because I think Litchfield Park is a beautiful place. I've lived here for 25 years. I'm particularly close to the Tierra Verde Park. I walk my dog around that thing six times a day. And I think we all remember that a lepale pine that lost its limbs some time ago, and then the limbs were removed, and it sat there for quite some time. And then it was finally cut down, I've forgotten when that was. I was just interested in knowing what the cost of that trunk removal was, because, sort of to my second point, there are a lot of discontinuities in the sidewalk around the lake. In fact, I've seen several people trip and fall on those. And the solution in the past has seemed to have been painting high-visibility paint on the discontinuities, which lasts for about two weeks. Doesn't change the discontinuity, it just makes them more visible for a short period of time. So I was just wondering if there's any intent to address those. And I know there was one section, when they were pouring the concrete for the parking lot next to the church, that they poured one section. And then my third point was asking if the city maintains as-built drawings as to what they do. The reason I ask that is when they were fixing the little swale that runs at the bottom where what I call the pink wash, where it crosses the sidewalk and then dumps on into the lake, I stood there in horror and somewhat amused while the backhoe operator lifted up the water line for the sprinklers, as well as the conduit. I have no idea how much that cost, you know, the city to... And really, my thought on it was it was just being overwatered. It wasn't a matter that really needed to be re-contoured. But I would be very interested to know if the city maintains as-bills so that before they go out with a backhoe, the operator can review those and say, "There's a sprinkler down there, there's control wiring down there, I'm not going to lift it up and embarrass myself." So those are the three points I'd like for them to address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
We could put that on a future agenda, but can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
When you say the backhoe driver, it was a water line, did you say, and then electrical also, or just a water line?
It is both. It was the pipe for the sprinklers, which ran down under the swale. Obviously, it was very shallowly buried. But then also the control wiring, because when they came, after they pulled all this up, they had to shut things down for a week or so while they reran, rerouted the lines so that they could get enough slopes, so they could get far enough below grade to actually have the, both the conduit for the wiring and then the water line itself. Like I say, I sat, it was a small backhoe, but I just said, "I think he's going to hit a water line there." So I stopped walking for a moment, and all of a sudden, here came this huge section of pipe. And then there were eight cones out there, it was cordoned off for a couple of weeks. Like I say, I think the city needlessly spent money, had they just referred to as-bills, to say, "Oh, I can't go digging down in that area because there's piping for the landscape irrigation sprinkler."
Thank you for that.
Well, and again, I just, I get concerned of things like that because money doesn't come for free. You have to be pushers for it. And so when things like that occur, if you spend it needlessly, and so, and the other, the safety issues on the sidewalk, you know, I just assume, continue to see that tree trunk sticking up and have the discontinuities in the sidewalk fixed, because I don't think that that tree was really going to fall on anybody, although I'm not a tree expert. I have no idea. I know it was riddled with beetle holes. Oh, and I just wanted, is there a number that we can call when we see sprinklers that have been snapped off and water is pouring out? Because again, I walk about every four hours. So 4:00 AM this morning, my dog and I were out walking around the lake. And we didn't see it this morning because our time, our time was off. Also on Thursdays, even though they mowed on Wednesday this week, they didn't have the sprinklers on. But there was a sprinkler head down there that for more than a week, it had been just gushing water. Fortunately, it sort of gets filtered, I think it goes into the grass before it finds its way into the lake. But it would be nice if there were something set up where citizens could report, "Okay, there's a broken sprinkler head approximately this location." You know, some means so that they're not wasting water. Because I regularly see things that are... And sometimes it's the kids inadvertently kick them because they'll sometimes not retract. Other times it may be the guys on the mowers, who, they do a great job, by the way. They are, I love watching them on Thursdays when they come out to mow that grass around the lake. But, and like I say, and everybody does a really good job, but I think we could make it even better if people had some means of informing others. And I've tried to flag down guys because there's one truck that always seems to be tending to landscape irrigation issues, and I just never saw that truck.
We have your contact information, right?
Yes.
So I know that we could get in touch with you for a number for that, or even like if there's an email or something. There's no problem there, for sure.
My dog wanted me to ask you if you could stop by and pick him up six times a day.
Might too.
Be happy to. You don't mind a knock on the door at 3:30?
We'll have him all ready to go for you.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, nice to meet you.
Appreciate it. Kathy has two, four dollars.
Really?
Which is why we know so much about her.
Staff reports, Community and Recreation Services monthly... Oh, I'm sorry Kathy, I thought, I had you written down for...
If I'm sorry, it's, or B, I want to talk about it.
Right. We're going to have, we're going to address that when we get to that item so that it stays in connection with us.
Right.
Later.
So when the agenda item hits, then we'll give you the first chance.
But I don't want that one, I want to be above the, after the report.
The BB.
For the...
On the planters.
5B on the planters?
No, no, 4B, 4B, 4B.
On the public works?
I have you on 5B for the planters, is that...
But I don't want 5B, I wrote down B, and unfortunately, I didn't put it on the number. I want to talk about the monthly report because I want it.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
Can we make that change now?
Well, she wants to come on.
She can, I mean, she can comment on, I mean, we can just flip and start with Public Works Report, and I'll do mine right after Kyle. No, that's quite all right, we might as well do that.
So at 4B, Kathy, okay. Community and Recreation Services Monthly Report, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Patty, Commissioners. The Community Rec Services Report is in your agenda. I'll just briefly provide a couple of quick updates. Some of you may have seen on our website and social media that the pool was down for a few days. Just wanted to let you know it is back up and running as of yesterday. It was not a major issue, but the start-stop button had some corrosion behind the button on the metal, which caused it to shut the pump off on Saturday morning. So we had to wait for an electrician to come out. They got it started, and the new part will be in on Monday. So all is well there, but that is why that happened. We had a couple of private lessons and parties that we had to cancel, but those people have been refunded or credited, and everyone was very nice about it. So we thank the community for that brief postponement and their fun at the pool. Otherwise, aquatics is going well, we're kind of tapering down. For August, we have private lessons, and in the evenings, we have adult water aerobics, and of course, open swim for the community. But those are the three things that are happening. All of the group swim lessons and parent's oddals, that is done as of July. And our lifeguards are starting to go back to school, just like all the young ones that take the lessons. So some of them are tapering off in terms of staffing too, but we're happy to keep the pool open to the community for open swim, and people are out there enjoying it tonight as we sit here too. So that's fantastic. Preschool started on Monday, all three preschool classes are filled. We have 19 kids in each class, and we've started a waitlist on a couple of them. So that's pretty exciting, fun to see the kids back. Some are super happy, and of course, the new ones cried a little the first couple of days, but they're all off to a good start. Community services, in terms of that, all of the appropriations that were distributed to the nonprofits for fiscal year '23, those checks have been sent out to the nonprofits, so everybody is in receipt of those, and I'm sure putting them to good use. And our flag raising Friday the 4th, in honor of the U.S. Coast Guard, went well. Special events, we're in the planning stages right now. Got a couple of new sponsors for the movie nights that we're starting up, and excited about that. We've got another meeting with the Wigwam about Oktoberfest next Friday, and just plugging along, looking for sponsors and attendees and artist participation, all that good stuff. And I know Pat has some updates on the numbers too that we provided, so I'll let him do that.
Thank you, Tricia. Yeah, so sports, we had a pretty good summer turnout with all our skilled classes, and our coach pitch season started, we had started practices this week on Tuesday and Wednesday night over at Jackie Robinson, so we had enough to create four teams, and we have 40 kids in that season. Our fall registration is still ongoing, it ends in just about a week, and we currently have 344 total participants through three sports. We have 197 in basketball, 56 in flag, and 95 in T-ball. So with school starting up and being close to the end, we usually, that's when we start getting a lot of those numbers increase, so we expect that to kind of rise.
I wanted to ask more about the sponsorships, if you could elaborate on what kind of sponsors, or maybe something that we could help spread the word or find some on.
Sure, absolutely. We have different levels, we have a packet online for sponsorships. People can go on the website and see the amounts and which element or which festival the sponsorship is for, and what those benefits of sponsorship are, so it's all detailed out in there. But our community events, we're generally looking for anything from, the movie nights are $1,000 sponsorships to sponsor the movie, and then there's supporting sponsors for $200 or $250. And we can customize things too. We have some people that say, "I can't give money, but I can give goods, or I can give my time," and we accept whatever to help make it fun for families and attendees. So there's nothing that we won't consider.
What time do the movies start in the parks?
They start at dusk, and dusk depends on which day it is as we go along. But so, for example, the one that we're doing on August 26th at the pool, dusk is about 7:45. And as we get into September, October, I think it goes a little closer to 7-ish, but...
And more importantly, at the Oktoberfest, will we be having German music? Or will we be having like American rock like last year?
I will tell you that we secured German music. We are bringing out a traditional German band, and they are bringing two pairs of dancers. So it should be fun. That was one of the biggest feedback points, was we want, we want the German music, yes. So we're excited to bring that back. Break them out. That's it from rec unless anybody has any other questions.
Thank you, Tricia.
You got it.
Public Works Monthly Report, presenter Kyle Ames, Director of Public Works.
Thank you Chairperson Patty, members of commission. Not a ton going on this month. West Coast Harbors will be finishing up the California fan pumps. With the scheduling, I think they're going to be finished by the end of this month. Once they finish up the fan pumps, I'll have a move-in to some group pruning throughout the city, or get some of these trees trimmed out. Hopefully, we can beat the monsoons if we ever get them, so I can alleviate some of this damage, so. But I'll start working on that with the area managers as soon as they wrap up with these pumps. Stuff will be adding and replacing signs throughout the city right of ways, as well as the new Stax Park parking lot. We're going to be adding in some more crosswalk signs throughout the city to help make these things a little bit more visual for passers and vehicles. So kind of alleviate the dangers that we've noticed the last couple of months. Stuff has begun, Camelback Park preliminary design for the new wall, it's just the beginning phases. I don't really have any designs yet, it's just still that discussion. Once I start receiving some more, I'll definitely present it to you guys in a future meeting. And then staff continues to work on obtaining quotes for the Stax Park restroom in Ramon and Tierra Verde Lake. I've been meeting with multiple contractors the last couple of weeks to acquire these quotes for these upgrades and repairs. I'm still working on the backflows for that water fountain as well. So I'm hoping I'll have that repaired within the next couple of weeks. On that, happy to answer any questions.
So at this point, I think we can turn to Kathy. Kathy, take it away.
First of all, thank you for removing that tree stump. Carl would have left it there. I was so glad to see it gone, for like a year and a half. So it's great that it was gone. For fixing the trip hazard at Cabrillo, that's the one that Carl also mentioned, and filling in low areas, you had a number of areas that you walked through with water up to your ankles, and you filled those areas. Things that have not been addressed. I made this list in May, and the items are still on there. I know you're busy, but I'm going to bring up some specific things. Health and safety, the crosswalks at Lila Hotel, my street, and Paladin need to be remarked. People drive too fast on that road, and as Carl said, I have four dogs, and so I'm back and forth across that street, as are many other residents there. And on weekends, it's incredibly busy. And people have said to me, "We can't see the crosswalks." And you can't because they're so worn out, and that is a real safety issue. So if you could please suggest that. You're missing a number of lights. There used to be some really nice solar lights around the lake. Right now, I think that you have maybe two. They've either been broken off, or they've been completely removed, and you can see where the holes where the screws went in. A well-lit park is a safe park. When I walk my dogs over there, I cannot tell you how many of those little liquid bottles I find. Time says no drinking in the park, people go over there and drink and let their bottles, but if it's well-lit, then you don't have that activity. Or some X-rated activities. And there are a couple more on either sidewalk. One at 312 of the higher lane south, another one on the south side of Old Litchfield Road. I'll give you the address. And then there's a broken bench across from Laguna Drive South. The branch is gone, which means that the back support is only attached on one side. So you've got this hazard there. Please don't just remove the bench, please fix this. Then, and then some of the orange trees, we ran out of paint when we did the volunteer thing. They've been brushed, but they've never been painted. And so from Indian School Road going up Old Litchfield Road until you get to the edge of Stax Park, they've been brushed, but no paint. So if you could do that. And then the final thing is that when you did the parking lot in conjunction with the church, some trees were planted. That was good. Some of the old trees were removed, they probably should have been. You have a number of trees back here that have been planted, and unfortunately, none of them are staked properly. You're doing more damage than you are good. A tree needs to flex, that's what causes it to develop the flare at the bottom, strengthens the roots, gives it strength overall. So the tree should be staked on either side. The two at the church, the caliber of the tree is larger than the caliber of the stake, and you're up like this. So the stake clearly is not needed. It's quite large, and you probably need no stake there. These little ones that you planted here would benefit, especially if this becomes a wind tunnel when we have storms, but they shouldn't be staked the way they are now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kyle, may I see that?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Vee.
For clarification, what part of the park are you talking about that had the liquor bottles?
The lake.
I see them all, yeah.
Over the lake, okay.
And Camelback Park, I see them all.
You go, go.
The turtle part.
I've even thought about asking Safeway if they have a protest.
In the islands, I'm sure you guys, your guys pick them up from the islands.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Park restrooms, they're, they're everywhere.
Interesting, I wonder what's the name? If better lighting takes care of my problems.
High school kids throwing up.
Yeah.
Thank you again. Are there any other questions? Okay, business, approval of minutes. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Patty and Commissioners. The minutes of the July 13th meeting are in your agenda package, and I will entertain a motion or any corrections or adjustments to them if needed.
Motion to approve the minutes from last month?
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion is passed. Tierra Verde Lake planter update, presenter Kyle Ames, Director of Public Works.
Thank you Chairperson Patty, members of commission. Last meeting, Commissioners requested that we... I present a different design option for this planner. I was brought to myself for the LP, what it would look like for an LP being placed there. Now these, this isn't the exact design, this was just a concept, so we can make these LP look like petrified wood, stamps, whatever, whatever we decide on, design-wise. They did let us know that these gateway signs can be made, not just in boulders, but we can make them into a hanging sign, some kind of low structure, Gabion Wall style as well. So I just wanted to let you guys know that this isn't just the only designs that they do.
Vice Chair Phillips.
I am all in favor of doing something at the lake. Personally, I think it needs to include the LP and the name of the lake, so that when you come in there, you know that it's Tierra Verde Lake. And this is just my personal opinion. These, the boulder ones to me just look a little bit rustic for Litchfield Park. They remind me of Wyoming or Colorado or something like that. And I looked online, pardon me, and sent a couple of ideas. I like the Gabion bottom, maybe with something more clean-cut on top. So I'm glad we're still exploring. I sent a couple of ideas to Tricia, because I didn't know where they should go, to be honest, who they should go to. So I'm just glad that we're at least moving in that direction and going to do something that, A, doesn't involve landscaping, because I think that's just labor and water intensive, so that's my two cents.
Commissioner Gertz actually has his hand up, and then Commissioner Schwartz.
I'm wondering, if we did something like this, I imagine that would have quite a bit of, like, it would need some foundation, because it's quite a bit of weight that's going this way. Do we have a lot of room that we can work with under there, because that's right where the drainage comes out?
Yeah, there's, there's six feet.
Oh, wow.
Almost, almost six feet from under that, yeah. So what they'll do is they'll pour a footer with post. So there'll be a long footer with four-inch solid post, and those, the LP will slide on top of that, and that's how it's bolted in. So it won't be able to tip over.
Interesting.
I have the same concern, because that P is going to get hung on, there's going to be little liquor bottles, other X-rated activities, and I, you know, I worry that that's going to be top-heavy and...
They assured me that it's, it's safe.
I'd like to, I had to Google Gabion Wall, like, that would be kind of cool there. And you could, like, you mentioned the hanging thing, like, you mentioned Tierra Verde. Well, like, Tierra Verde Lake with an LP hanging on that might be also kind of cool.
My, my concern would be that the material, would this be a concrete, what we...
Yes, it's concrete.
So, right, we always see the graffiti and the etching and, you know, Jimmy was here, and that kind of thing. Is that easily rectified with this kind of material?
Yes. So they put a graffiti lacquer base material on it, and it's a tin, I think it's a tin warranty or lifetime warranty if we pay the extra. And they'll come out, they can repaint it onsite, doesn't have to be removed. So, yeah, everything would be graffiti-proof on the stuff.
We're all going to be Googling standing on walls.
It's like the rocks that fill, like, they're kind of baskets.
Like, people have them in front of their, have walls on Palm Lane.
Roundabout, yeah.
For their riding.
Galus, that's all the bare hazy.
Yeah, like the roundabout.
Gotcha.
Their general estimate, and I'm sorry if you mentioned it already, on cost?
For the LP? No, I have not got a cost for it, that was just a design that they sent over after I requested. And it, the costs will range depending on size. So if we want to go very large, I think that was based off eight foot by six feet tall, each letter.
So can I just, so this is one of the things I sent to Tricia, and I can pass my phone around. Something like that. And then I've got another one. I, to me, am I the only one that thinks that that looks like it belongs in Ed Rock?
Yeah.
I thought Flintstone, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not, that's not us, you guys.
I think something like that.
I think this one, honestly, this one I'll pass around, and I mean, granted, it's two leaves, and we wouldn't even have to have the glass in there, I can pass it around, but something like that, that's just, and do the LP in the metal with the lake name underneath, I don't know, I just think...
So maybe we could request that these pictures get on the next agenda for...
Yeah, Kyle, Kyle did get copied on that, and I think that's why he had said that about the Gabion Wall too. So that he, we're obviously not set on this, this was based on what we had the discussion last month, and certainly open to those kind of things, just need the direction from you guys.
Commissioner Gertz.
Sort of question, do we want to do a consistent design signage for each park? That would, like, ideally, each park, as we need to redo the signs, and so, but a consistent design? Or do you want to do something bespoke for every park?
I have a question, I'd comment on that too. We saw, for the city center, we saw some of the design work, the gateway signs, I think we should tie into that. I don't know if that was already set and ready, like, in production, or where things are with that, but we can, we can play off of that, because I think that's part of what's over there now, the Gabion.
So the, the city gateway signs have been accepted. They, they have the design, this is a certain design that they're going with. Now, we can certainly reach out to the contractors that are taking on these signs, and see if they can give us a design for stuff like this as well going into the future, park, say, gateway signs for the parks, you know, eventually they're going to have to be replaced.
Yeah.
And I agree, I think we should keep them consistent.
I agree.
So the photos that you sent over, I did reach out to Boulder Designs, and they can recreate... So the photos that you sent over, I did reach out to Boulder Designs, and they can recreate anything that's been sent.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, so, they're not, Boulder Designs is just their name, they don't strictly stick to boulders. They can make essentially anything that we need.
And most of these things that I looked at, like, they, they do them everywhere, like, all over the world and almost anything. So, that's kind of what I figured. But I think, I mean, we're making such strides in our city to be like a grown-up city, that I think it's really important that we have consistent signage, and that it's not mishmash, and that it, it's all throughout our community the same. So when people come in, they're like, yep, this is Litchfield.
Is, is it, would it be plausible to ask the, the gateway sign architects and designers, hey, this is what we're thinking, is there a, a melding of these ideas that still matches that, that has that originality?
Yeah, I mean, we could even go with what they do. I mean, I've liked what I've seen for the city center signage. I've, the little bit I've seen, I think it's attractive, and it uses our colors and our logos and all of that. I wouldn't be opposed to having them design something for parks and the lake.
I can get with John Froch, our special projects manager, and see what, what these costs could be for these.
Commissioner Faith?
I'm pretty sure we're going to have one of those kind of gateway entryway signs just down the street at Indian School. So I would think something that is similar, but with some sort of artistic addition next to it, like, the, the leaves in the ground with the glass thing that you had. Like, something that's unique to each park, but then also, like, the consistency as well, so it's not just, you know, plain, like, the same sign everywhere.
I even thought, like, an orange, you know, because we have the orange tree. So maybe they could do a symbolic orange or something.
Or a play on the park name.
Yeah.
Camelback Park, Tiarverdy Lake, Scout Park, Scag.
Commission artwork that matches the name of the park. That'd be cool.
Got to find one of those artists that'll work for, you know, food or something.
A starving, literally.
Maybe call it a contest.
I was just going to say that, put it out to the high school.
Are there any other questions? Great discussion, everybody.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yes, thank you, Kyle. New Memorial Bench Program. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy. I'm sure Kyle and I will both speak to this. We've been kind of working together to get this back into the forefront. I think it was in January of 2022 when Richard Elverado, our former Public Works Director, brought this to you guys and said, hey, we're looking at updating the memorial bench program that we have in place. It's fairly outdated. The pricing that had been in place, from what I'm backtracking and finding is $350 for a bench in perpetuity. And, I mean, in today's world, we can't even get a bench, that's like a third of the cost of a bench. Yeah. And the, the concrete benches that we have now, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't even get those anymore. They don't produce them anymore. The ones that were out there, as you mentioned, a lot of them are in disrepair. So it's a, a perfect opportunity, staff thinks, to, to get a pro, new program in place, um, at the right price point, for the right time span, and to reinvigorate this. We had some, a Boy Scout do an Eagle Scout project several months back, and he brought his troop and friends out to go inventory our benches. They did a pretty good job of locating them, taking pictures of them, determining if they were memorial benches or not, taking pictures of the plaques, and putting this all on a spreadsheet for us. So, we've gone through a little bit, but I think we still need to go through a little more and, and tweak those to notate them the way city staff would notate them as to where the parks are and which areas of the parks they're in. Right now, they're just kind of based on their, their longitude and latitude. So we'll go back and, and double-check those. But in the meantime, you guys have in, as part of your packet, um, what was put together in terms of pricing, and a brief application that we'd like you to look over and hopefully give your stamp of approval on, and help us put a timeline in place for putting this program into gear.
Vice Chair Phillips?
I love the green bench, and I love the style of it. And they're probably really similar to what's at Scout Park-ish, kind of along that line. Not the same, right?
No, so the ones at Scout Park don't have the polycoating.
Okay.
Those are kind of a raw metal bench. These polycoated benches are going to last a lot longer.
Okay, so, I love the bench, the four-by-six-inch brass plaque. I mean, the brass with our sun and our water, and only four-by-six inches. You have to do this to see who that, that bench is to. There's, I think, many other ways to do plaques, even like the, this kind of thing. I think there's more durable versions of this kind of thing, where it might have to be a little bit bigger, but it's going to last better and be a little bit more visible. I just think brass, I mean, when you look at those, they're just trash in six months, because of sun and water.
A lot of the current ones are four-by-twos, just...
But I mean, four-by-six is a note card, on the side of a note card, it's tiny.
Well, I'm wondering if, if you have it any larger, does it compromise the structure of the bench?
No, it's just...
So, with, with these benches, we, we had various select products to choose from for these plaques. With, when it become, when it comes to the memorial stuff, it's very limited on what's out there. This is what we found, that we could get readily available, even, you know, going long-term, because these are very popular, and these are very popular in other cities. I think the town of Prescott uses these ones, Fountain Hills, and I think it was Peoria is starting to use these ones as well. We, we did a lot of research, we contacted other cities for this. Are we stuck to this design? Not necessarily, but we're very limited on what's out there for the memorial stuff.
What's another option besides brass?
Stainless steel.
Wouldn't that weather better?
Stainless steel does not rust. So it would, it would, it would hold up, it's more, it's more money, the cost is significantly more.
Would it raise the price of the $2,500?
It's just a tiny little note card.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would essentially raise the cost, the total cost of the bench. But I know the plaques, I think they're ranging from forty or fifty bucks, I mean, it might, it might jump.
So it might go to seventy-five?
Yeah, seventy-five, eighty, somewhere around there, depending on what's available.
Commissioner Gertz, you had your hand up too, and then Commissioner Faith?
Yeah, first of all, this looks great, I love it. There are so many things that we've talked about, that you've incorporated in here and in the application, so it's awesome. In terms of the size, I, I think the size is good, I'm kind of afraid something bigger might be a little gaudy, a little, like, too showy of like my bench. I would agree that if it's a more durable metal, then that would be preferable. The only thing I, and, you know, for sure Faith probably has better thoughts on this than I do, but in terms of, if I send this in and I send you my money, do we need something on here that says the city has the right to review and to reject these things? It's not like we're going to give, we're going to let you put whatever you want on the bench? Do we need to stipulate something in advance of, like, what's permissible and what's not permissible? Or do we just say the city has the right to review and leave it at that?
Subject to approval.
Yeah, we have policies that, like, okay, people's names are good, political messages, and vulgarity, you know, maybe that's not what we want on the benches, obviously, right? But do we need a, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I think we will, we'll be able to regulate what these plaques are going to be able to say. We're going, we're definitely going to regulate, and I think we might need to add that into this.
Like, the city reserves the right to verify validity and...
Or if it's a, you know, a proverbage.
City attorney probably has some clause to just put there that is blanket for everything.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I mean, it's so much of what we've talked about is exactly on here over the years, actually, so it's, it's great.
And how long do we say that they were going to be good for?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay.
That's fair.
Or Brian, did you say?
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, a second, second to you that the size seems okay. Just, any bigger, it might get gaudy, and, I mean, when you're looking at it, you're going to be sitting on the bench.
Commissioner Colbre?
More for the person that knows it.
Sheriff, Commissioner Faith?
Also wanted to ask, with the weather of the plaque, because the ones that we have now have gotten coated or whatever, it's got to have some kind of coating on it, or something to make it, like, it's got the polycoating on the bench, is there also something on the plaque that's going to make it weather better?
I can look into that.
With stainless steel, if it's going to be enough contrast?
The problem, the problem with brass is that patina is very quick and easy, especially with any moisture. So I can, I can definitely ask the place that we get these plaques from, if there's any coating that we can put on this to kind of alleviate those damages.
I'll put it in the house and just get one.
Sure. I will note, the reason I brought up the stainless steel, we did have an Eagle project in Kwanis Park, and they replaced a lot of those plaques on the posts. They, we, the place that we get the plaque from recommended that we went to stainless steel to avoid those, to avoid these issues. So that's the reason, if I was bringing up stainless steel, it'd probably be another option.
That'd be a good choice.
Great idea.
I, I do really like the design too.
Commissioner Colbre?
Yeah, I think it all looks good, I like the design of the benches, everyone else has said as well. I was wondering, is the, you're researching other cities, is the cost, is this typical with other cities, in line with the market?
Pretty complex, yeah.
I think so. But yeah, overall, looks good. Do we know yet, or have you thought about, when, how would you implement these? You know, if there's only ten interested, but say we need, we really need to replace twenty benches in the park, does the city plan to buy them, or do we wait for people to submit? Or is it, kind of cross that bridge when you get there, see how many, how much interest you have?
So these particular ones are going to be strictly memorial though, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I think our first thought is that we reach out to those that currently have memorial benches. That's not going to be an easy task, so it'd be great if you all might be able or willing to help too. Kyle and I were talking, we were thinking that we would put something on, on the website and on social media, kind of a call to the community, saying, hey, we're, we're going to implement a new memorial bench program in the new year, and then give people through the end of this year to make contact with us, and us to reach out and, and track down as many people that have loved ones that are being memorialized on the benches, so that we can give them the first right of refusal or acceptance on the location of the current bench. And say, hey, this is what we're doing, we will be tearing this bench down, installing a new bench, would you like to continue to have this space? It would be at the new cost, obviously, but at least to give them that opportunity. And that gives people a few months to get to us, because some of these families that have benches out there may be far removed from us at this point, or one or two generations that we need to get through to if possible.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I was going to say, I want to reach out to Fountain Hills, Prescott, Peoria, see what their plaques look like. See what they use, some of those, like, and how long ago did they install them? And that might just answer our question on the plaque material.
Well, I'm going to go look at Kwanis Park and stainless steel ones.
They're just the little markers, right, of what cap, which cap, the speed.
Yeah, they're on the posts, right?
Yeah, the, uh, processed treated wood posts that the plaques are on top of.
Yeah, I've never looked at those, I'm going to go look at those.
They've been there, that was, how many years ago they redid that?
A long time. Yeah, it's been a while, and then we recently just did it, I think it was last year, if I remember right, last year, and we, uh, Boy Scouts put the new plaques on top.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Faith?
Tricia, are there still mailers that go out for city line?
No, mailing it, no.
I think this would be something that might be good postcard mailing. Once you reach out to the, the families of the benches that were, have already been in place all these years and find that maybe they don't want to touch, say, that higher cost, I think this might be a nice mailer. Maybe in conjunction.
You're going to have a lot of benches. I think a lot of people will do this.
So, are there benches that aren't memorial benches that are in sad shape?
Yes, there's, there's, there's a lot of benches out there that we don't have records of as well. I don't know if it's been lost in the past, you know, these records have kind of just dissipated. Somebody called in, hey, I'd like a bench, can you put it here? We'll throw it out there. Some of the benches are missing plaques, so we have no idea where they go to, who, 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 who they belong to, essentially. So we, we struggle with that as well.
Are these going to, so if you replace a bench that's not, that someone hasn't chosen to make a memorial bench, and the city's just replacing a bench, are they going to use this? Bench?
Yeah, so...
Okay, without the plaque?
Correct.
So if you just put a city bench in, it's not a memorial bench, so they'll all be consistent throughout the park?
Yes, we, we are trying to convert over to this.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to keep it consistent through all the parks.
Okay.
A lot of these concrete benches are in pretty bad shape. So it's, I think it's time that we start getting this moving and, and start getting some of this replaced.
It's like sixty or seventy of them, I think, somewhere between that. And most of them, there's, I think about fifty that definitely are or were memorial benches.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Wow.
A lot more than I ever thought.
Yeah.
Commissioner Colbre, and Commissioner Faith?
So as far, how many benches are considered memorial benches? And if there's other benches that weren't memorial benches, are you considering making them memorial benches? Or are we just replacing what was there?
I mean, we're, I don't think we're opposed to not making all the benches memorial benches. It gives everybody an opportunity to get an option to purchase those memorial benches. We're not set on, we're having a set amount per park that's not memorial, and then we have a set amount that's memorial. I, I'm not against making them all memorial, it gives everybody a chance.
Well, then they have the option on the form to say where they would like to have it.
What I would like to say, though, is I, I would like to kind of limit how many benches we put in certain parks. I, I don't, I don't feel like we should have fifteen, twenty benches in a park. I mean, it might be overcrowded, especially with sports being there, I just don't want to intrude on those areas. So if we can set a certain amount per park, that would be the best option.
Well, and maybe that's something you, as Public Works, would set up, is here's the benches that are available, here's where they're located, so the lawnmowers can go through them, and that, you know, they're, they don't interfere with sports stuff. So the spots are preset, and then you pick the spot, and it's sort of first come, first served, so that you don't end up with fourteen at Scout Park and two at Rose Park, I don't know, you know, whatever, but...
Trust your discretion on that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, they know how they work.
They know how the, the lawn guys have to get through.
Hold on one second. Commissioner Faith, you had your hand up too.
Yes. I want to ask, if you put in a city bench, and you turn it into a memorial bench later, like, can you just add the plaque later if somebody wants to buy it? Or are these like two different styles of benches?
No, so we can, we can stick to this bench, and then where the plaque is, it's just a blank spot. So if anybody, if we have to replace a bench that nobody's purchased yet, and it's in despair, and we need to, to filter those out, we could always put that bench there, and then somebody comes in and says, hey, I would like that bench at, you know, Turtle Park. We can definitely do that.
I don't think, though, that we're going to create a different payment level for that. We're going to keep it all at that, $2,500 for a ten-year span, that's literally $250 a year, and it's a donation to memorialize in the public space, if you guys are... That's our thought.
Absolutely.
Even if the bench is already there, it's still $2,500.
My, my thought process was, when you buy a bench, it's going to be after a significant event, or someone passes away, so it's not all going to happen on January first.
Right, right.
Like, it's going to come in over, I mean, hopefully, a number of years, or a year, or some amount of time.
Yeah, and I think we've got some language in, in the application too, that, that says that, that this is, will have to be done at a time that's convenient to the city. I mean, obviously, we'll try and coordinate as best we can, Public Works will, with, with the family.
Yeah, I like the language you have in here, that you'll, you know, work with Public Works to identify the right location.
Yeah. One of the other things that we saw one or two other cities have is an online... One of the other things that, um, we saw one or two other cities have is an online mapping system where there's like a, a locator and you can, uh, someone can literally go online and say, oh, these green benches are available, these red ones are currently already memorializing someone. These blue benches are new locations that I could.
Yeah.
Ask for. Um, so we're gonna get with our city engineer to see if there's an application, um, that we can use to do something similar. So all this obviously will take a little bit of time, but we figure if we roll this out by the new year, then we can start doing that. That gives us time to contact people and start getting the word out.
Commissioner Fix and then Commissioner Gertz.
Um, you may have answered this already. I don't know if, if it was already on, on a topic. But are these the same benches that will be in city center?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I, I would, I would have to double check for you.
Because, because again, like the signs, don't we want to be consistent and have continuity?
I'd be okay with that being true.
I think Litchfield Square is gonna be a different animal. And I don't know that council administration are even thinking in terms of memorial benches being in there.
I ask that because once we start rolling out with our beautiful development, I'm sure that people will want their, their memorial bench to be over there. So that's, I think that's something to consider.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think they have their contour benches over at the city center, but I'll, I'll double check. But I'm pretty sure they're not, they're not these.
Commissioner Gertz.
We've, we've talked about this for quite a while. I don't wanna unnecessarily hold this up yet another month on my nuanced details. Um, though I think obviously you guys will take the plaque, you know, metal thing into advice. Do we need a very like specific motion on, yeah, add some legal language and steel plaque? Or can we just generally make a motion that we like the direction that it's going and let's go?
I think we could just say we like the direction.
With recommendations made.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna, okay, okay. Could, I like to make a motion to, um, approve the memorial bench program. Starting January first, twenty twenty-four.
Are there any more questions regarding the memorial bench program?
I do.
Fire away.
One last thing, you guys. Are we worried about sleeping on these benches in the parks?
Yeah.
They're all closed at sundown in Litchfield, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna have like those little anti-sleeping bars in the middle. I don't particularly like them, but.
We don't have them on the current area, you know.
What are those?
No, just.
That's not a problem right now.
They can't lay down.
As far, as, as far as I'm aware, no, that's, it hasn't been an issue. Um, I mean, concrete is very solid, so it's probably not the most comfortable thing to sleep on. But these are, you know, they do have a different, I can look into something like that as well to see if, see if it's something we could potentially add to it, but I think they come and end up as a problem. I, I'm not aware of it.
We do have, it seems like the police move them along because their, our parks are closed at a certain time. They're not overnight parks.
But they don't enforce that.
I've seen them enforce it.
I'm sorry?
I've seen them enforce it.
I walk around that lake, like I say, six times a day. I have never seen, let me say, I am very pro, uh, we have great police coverage now. But I've never seen them come out of that park at ten o'clock at night, at two o'clock in the morning, at five o'clock in the morning. Never. Since Avondale or even back when it was M, MCSO. There are people down there fishing, there are people down there, I've seen them fornicating on the benches. I mean, it's, get your butt down there to Tierra Verde at three o'clock in the morning and walk around. Then you'll get to see what's going on, the drug exchanges that are happening on Laguna South and Bahia South. You know, I think you all are living in a bit of a bubble. So, you know, if we're talking about people sleeping on benches, I've seen them sleeping over here at the gazebo, you know, by the school. And I've seen them sleeping on the ground over here at Tierra Verde. So come on, let's get to the reality side of this equation.
Well, we'll pass that on.
Well, that's all certainly a lot of information there to work with.
We have a motion on the table.
So the motion was seconded. Commissioner Faith was the last question. Are there any other questions on? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Excuse me. Commissioners report on current events. Commissioner Schwartz.
Current events. Thanks for starting with me. Didn't get a chance to think about it. Uh, I don't have anything right now. I, I might come back, come to ask you at the end, but.
Commissioner Colbreath. Vice Chair Phillips.
Nothing. Nothing to report.
Commissioner Fix.
Quiet for once.
Commissioner Gertz.
I'm gonna report.
Not gonna change it now.
Commissioner Faith.
I don't feel bad about having that.
Nothing to report, you guys. Thank you. I, I don't feel bad about having that.
So I'll just say, uh, one thing. So I was really excited to make a phone call and I, I got a tour of the Litchfield property up the hill. And I would encourage all, um, commissioners to give that a shot because holy, not to say that, um, the time that you spent with me, I really appreciate, because that's probably the, the, uh, most important thing in your day, just having the time and we spent like two hours up there and it's amazing.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Kyle given tours of the, the.
He, he did.
Okay, yeah.
He did, he did.
I didn't take you up on that.
I'm, I'm extremely grateful.
Maybe we should all go one day.
Yes, yeah, we can, we can set a. Be efficient with your time.
You get us all now.
Let us know.
So again, thank you very much. Much appreciated. And of course, um, the city looks great. Everything's looking great and as a family, as a dad, we're looking very forward to the movies in the park. Kids are asking about it. I guess the word's getting out. So, all right, well, that's all I had. Topics for city council referral, we had a motion passed on the memorial bench program. That would be the only one, right? Am I missing anything?
Oop.
Okay. So we're just waiting for a motion on adjournment, guys.
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
Are there any questions?
No questions. I'm ready.
So all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.